The wearing, I'll thank you and leave this in a bunch of allegiance.
A bunch of allegiance to reply. United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberating justice of all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, first up, we have discussion and approval of our previous meeting's minutes.
Will be presented.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Onto last day's calendar, any discussion, any questions? All done, all right. Then we'll proceed to previously signed documents. Discussion, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up on the agenda, we have department update from county attorney. Heath Brody, nice to see you.
Good evening, how we doing?
No space divvying?
Oh, yeah, very good, how was yours?
Merry pre-Christmas.
All right, well, so I'll start off by discussing quickly the current caseload. Right now, we have six hundred and ninety criminal cases docketed in Superior Court. Just to give you some context, last year we only had six hundred eighty. Right now, given my math is correct, we are on pace at sixty years. And as I've said in the past, that number is kind of misleading in terms, I mean, it's a high number, especially when you look at cases per attorney. I mean, the National District Attorney's Association has always said caseload per attorney for felony cases should be about a hundred, we more than surpassed that. But we're also dealing with the repeal of felonies first. But another thing that we've seen in the last six months or so is really the crush from the state when they reduce jury trials from twelve months of the year to ten months. So all jury trials were canceled in the month of July and December. So what that has done this past fall is really put us under the gun in terms of trial work. So I know back in May, you had an update talking about the office gone through nine jury trials past six months, well, we've done eight since September twenty second. And that's also a misleading number two, because in the past six weeks, I've had two jury trials, but I was supposed to have four. Two of them were continued day of jury selection or later for things outside of my office's control. We're talking about, we didn't have enough qualified jurors in the jury pool to actually pick a jury. So I, you know, we go through all the preparation to get it ready. And then another time, somebody fails to appear, we can't, can't pick a jury if somebody fails to appear. So we're doing a ton of trial work. Now thankfully, it is not just me that's doing it. I'm happy to report that it is spread out amongst the attorneys. I believe that last three or four months, we've had at least one trial for each of the attorneys in the office. We are right now fully staffed, which is very helpful. Our newest attorney started in August. Now, there's a caveat to that, she's the newest attorney, but she's also a quote new attorney. She's being sworn in tomorrow down in Concord. So there's going to be an easing in period. She's very talented and she's doing, she's surpassing my expectations at the moment. But even still, you know, this is a person who's fresh out of law school. I can't, you know, rightfully say, here, have a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty cases and figure it out. I have been working closely with her and, you know, I've already put her on some of my trials. I've been impressed with what I've seen so far, but, you know, there still is that process to acclimate her to the job. Hoping in the next few months, she can get up to speed so that we can give her full caseload and so she can really help ease the tension from all the extra work we have to do with probable cause hearings, circuit court, as well as the number of trials that we have. Because we're still, I know this is going to be hard to believe, we are still dealing with backlog trials that were caused by the pandemic. I mean, I've had two trials in the last six weeks. One was a twenty-three docket and another was a twenty-twenty docket. So things are not resolving quickly. I mean, I will say that a lot of my cases are, you know, child sex abuse, the more difficult cases, which are not going to be resolved through plea, you got to get to trial. But with only X amount of attorneys in the office and only one judge in the courthouse, there is only so much trial time you can actually get. So there is that too. But yes, as I said, we're fully staffed, so I'm hoping that things can ease up a little bit in the coming months. As for our budget, we are on pace to be well under budget this year. I think there are two main reasons for that. First, we were understaffed. We were missing an attorney for the first eight months of the year, so, or seven months, I should say, of the year, which that's always going to bring your numbers down. But another thing I will say, another big factor is, you know, I budgeted last year for several trials, one in particular where it was going to cost X amount of dollars for experts. That has been pushed off. I'm trying to get a better understanding of like when it will actually happen. I still have to prepare as though it's going to happen, I believe, in February now. But in terms of cost and what I'm paying for experts and other things like that, you know, we'll see the next few weeks what I can get paid on this calendar year versus next. But that's kind of where we are in terms of the budget and overall updates. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, Heath, thank you for that presentation. Very important. When or if can you anticipate some kind of correction in this overload of workload?
That's a good question. I, well, the one I will say, most of the problems that we experience in this are really out of our control. I mean, you know, for one, whether a person decides to take responsibility, plead guilty, you know, that is completely up to them. If they want to have a trial, that's their choice. And we are seeing higher volume in cases total. So the more people that want to push the envelope and go to trial, we're happy to, you know, to go forward. You know, we don't bring these cases if we don't think we can prove them. But that does take time and does slow everything else down. The court has been very ambitious in its schedule. From my perspective, at times, it's a little too ambitious. I think that, when I say too ambitious, they'll have X amount of cases scheduled for jury selection. The way it works is jury selection is scheduled on a specific day, let's call it September twenty-sixth. And all the cases for the next two weeks will be picking at that particular time. So depending on how many cases are going to trial, you might have two, three, four cases that are trying to pick a jury. Well, you only have X amount of potential jurors that can be seated on a particular case. And you start to eat up through those individuals. And the more cases you put on for jury selection, the harder it is to find people that are qualified to sit on it. So what I have seen happen recently is you get, you know, you say that there are three trials they're going to pick, but you don't have enough qualified jurors for all three, so the third one is going to just be continued, which is frustrating because you put all that work into getting that case prepared. And particularly if it's a case involving a victim, it's very hard to explain to somebody, hey, your case didn't get reached just because we don't have enough people at the jury.
And you mentioned you're bringing in a new attorney fresh out of law school. Do you not have one or two other members in your office who are relatively young and only a year or two from law school?
I only have one other. Most of my attorneys, there are six of us in the office. Excluding me, there are three others that have been practicing for quite some time. Two of them, my assistant county attorneys, have been with us since twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen respectively. And my deputy has worked in the county off and on since the early two thousands, I believe. So I mean, at least there is experience there, our two newest ones, you know, getting up to speed. I will say the newest one, she was an intern at the Merrimack County Attorney's Office, the Attorney General's Office, and she worked at the Suffolk Law Prosecution Clinic her last year in law school. So she was essentially acting as a prosecutor in district court in Massachusetts. So that's, I mean, we're very, very lucky to have found somebody who had that kind of experience coming quite out of law school.
Keith, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Deborah, on the agenda, the CDBG public hearing, is that, are we in sequence for that now?
Yes, and you have documentation of highlighted arts, and Donna Lane is here to facilitate presenting.
Welcome.
Been a little while.
You.
Well, thank you.
If you want to open, I can read through.
So, would you like to open a public hearing?
Yes.
But this will be a public hearing on proposed archway expansion project, CDBG application.
Okay, so I have to read too because they're very tricky about the wording. First of all, there's informational packets up right outside that door, okay? Community development block grant, CDBG funds are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to five hundred thousand dollars annually is available for economic development projects, up to five hundred thousand dollars for housing projects, up to five hundred thousand dollars for public facility projects, up to five hundred thousand dollars in emergency funds, and up to twenty-five thousand dollars for planning study grant. All projects must directly benefit a majority of low and moderate income persons. This is a proposed application to the Community Development Finance Authority for up to five hundred thousand dollars in community development block grant, public facility funds. Of the total grant, up to thirty-five thousand will be retained by the county to cover eligible administrative and labor compliance costs. The remaining funds will be sub-branded to Archways, a nonprofit family resource center located at Black Prospect Street in Tilton, to support a major facility expansion projects. Archways proposes to add a full second story to its existing facility to increase programming space and services. The majority of people served by Archways are low and moderate income. This project conforms with Bellnet County's Housing Community Development Plan school of encourage member municipalities to support efficient and high-quality community facilities, human social services, and amenities to meet existing and future needs of Bellnet County residents and visitors.
Very good, thank you for that. Having said that.
Ask for public comments?
Is there anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing no public comments, we will close this public hearing. And we will move on to a public hearing on the residential anti-displacement relocation assistance plan for the archway expansion project.
So this is always a funny one. Every time we ask for CDBG funds, we have to go through this one. And most often, we're not displacing or relocating anybody. But again, it's project-specific, you have adopted it every time we've asked for CDBG in the past. This plan outlines measures under the Uniform Relocation Act required for CDBG projects that involve any displacement or relocation of persons or businesses. If the county were to undertake a CDBG project which involved displacement or relocation, they would follow this plan. The plan outlines the measures they would take to find comparable suitable housing for persons or businesses displaced or relocated. This project does not anticipate any displacement or relocation. This archway will rent space in the nearby church for housing staff and participant meetings. Staff that are not required to be on-site will be relocated to the Franklin office temporarily. All right.
Okay, is there any public comment on this section of the grant? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on this aspect of the application. And we will open a public hearing on housing community development plan.
The proposed Bellnet County's Housing Community Development Plan identifies needs which currently exist or anticipated during the next three years. The plan provides a basis for guiding the county's housing community development objectives and actions. The housing community development plan was last adopted in two thousand five three and has to be no more than three years old. No changes have been made to the plan, so we're just re-docketing. So the goals right now that you have, promote and support the development of a balanced and diversified regional economy, which uses the region's natural built-in human resources while respecting limitations of the environment. Encourage adequate saving need housing for all Asian income groups in the county. Promote activities by Bellnet County municipalities that protect the health and safety of county residents and visitors. Encourage member municipalities to support efficient and high-quality community facilities, human social services, and amenities to meet the existing and future needs of Bellnet County residents and visitors.
Very good. Regarding this plan, is there any public comments? Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing of this last aspect of the plan. And commissioners, we will enter into our voting room.
Want to make a motion? Similar to what is highlighted here?
Sure, I'll, I'll move to approve this bill of the CBDG grant, or application and vote to authorize county administrator to sign and submit the CDBG application. And upon approval of the CDBG application, authorize the county administrator to execute any documents which may be necessary, the CDBG contract and any amendments thereto.
I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Okay, Deborah.
I think you're not done with you yet. Keep going. Two more, please.
Right, so next up on the docket is a vote to adopt the Anti-Displacement Relocation Assistance Plan.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. And finally, a vote to adopt the Housing and Community Development Plan. Is there a vote?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck with this. Thank you. All right, commissioners, Deborah, authorization for the treasury to borrow in anticipation of taxes? I go.
You did skip one, but you can.
Which one did I skip?
Awarding the CDBG grant writer bid.
Oh, my goodness, I did. My apologies.
So you were required to.
Two things, I don't want to forget that. Deputy Treasurer thing.
All right, you can do the grant writer bid after the treasurer.
Okay.
Okay.
Am I okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm here every year about this time to start the process for planning for the county's borrowing needs for next year. I sent out a memo that I do every year with a copy of the statute in here that explains the process. Basically, it directs the commissioners to request that I go before the executive committee of the delegation to borrow money. It's always been my practice to come in here with that plan in place and ask you just to endorse my recommendation for borrowing. I've been working with our finance director, Lori Sharp, and have sent you a copy of our historical borrowings for the last several years, all of which I've done here, been the treasurer, by the way. This is, this is your number twenty, for me. And my last, by the way.
Oh, that was, sorry to hear.
Don't do it, Mike. So I've done pretty good at the process. Anyway, we've, we both kind of determined that it looks like the number that we're going to need for next year is sixteen million, which is the same as last year. Borrowing costs might be slightly higher. We're looking at between four and five percent. I think from what she tells me, she's built that into the budget for next year. So it should be all right from that perspective. So what I'm really looking for is for the commissioners to endorse the county's borrowing up to sixteen million dollars for twenty-sixth. I'm anticipating a call from neither Debbie or Lori sometime, probably in February, where I'll be presenting this request to the executive committee of the delegation. At least sooner than February.
Sorry.
So hopefully soon as in February. Right, looks like you need. I think, I think we run out of money early March, so it's probably going to come up in early February. Yeah. Before that, as soon as we can, start the process. Yeah. I would say. Whenever, whenever they tell me at, be there, I will be. I will be in a warm climate, but I'll attend via Zoom.
You can't position.
I'll go on Monday, I'm not in yet. Any questions at all about officials?
Nope. Moving on, is there a motion? Yeah, this requires a motion to authorize?
Yes.
So moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay. Now, Deputy Treasurer. Historically, that mean, the responsibilities of Deputy Treasurer is to fill in in my absence. But my practice has been over the years is the only time I really call upon her is to attend the executive committee of the delegation because the statute says that I have to be physically present. And I guess they don't consider me on a Zoom call to be physically present. So she comes to the meeting and I usually do all the talking. So that's her primary role. I don't know if you all know who Carmen is, she's the.
Please.
Okay, she's been Deputy Treasurer for a number of years, thankfully. She's been willing to do that, and I'd like to ask you to reappoint her for another year. So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So, great. That's it.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner, we'll just backtrack for a moment regarding awarding CDBG grant writer bid.
There were, this was put out to bid. There were two bids received, one from Donna Lane, who you just heard from.
Yes.
And another one from Green Mountain Professional Services. So Donna's, and the fees, up to four thousand dollars of the fee are paid by the grant within the grant. So Donna's fee is four thousand dollars, Green Mountain's fee is nine thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. So my recommendation is that you award this project to Donna Lane.
Makes sense to me.
Is that a motion?
It is, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Deborah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, it looks like we have a couple donations. We accept, we have a donation from Barbara Pong, an amount of one hundred dollars for the Gift and Dequest Trust Fund.
Make a motion to accept that.
Right, all in favor? Aye, motion carries. And we have an additional donation from David and Sylvia Detcher in the amount of fifty dollars for the Gift and Dequest Trust Fund. Is there a motion to accept? Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And what's the last donation? And next up on the agenda, we have Superintendent Wetherby. Good evening, Michelle.
Good evening, how are you?
Welcome, you are well, thank you for asking.
Excuse me. So I come before you in regards to the core program. I put out an RFP to cover the costs of the clinical person for course. I received only one bid, and that was from Horizons. Horizons has provided core services since it is twenty twenty, sorry, nineteen eighty-seven, they started working with Bellnet County. And then they moved over to creating the core program. I've already put this number in the budget of seventy-seven thousand to cover it. So it's already budgeted for.
I did. Twenty-six.
Yes, it's for twenty-six, it started January first of twenty twenty-six, which would provide the core services, that's one clinical person. I did look at what would be more financially responsible of having the person be county employee versus staying with Horizons. It's more cost-effective to stay with Horizons due to the benefits and all the training that's required and support to that person. So I'm requesting that the RFP be awarded to Horizons to continue the program.
Should we be surprised or what are the bidders?
No, when this was previously put out, the last two times, Horizons has been the only company that's put in for it. I looked at, I reached out to the other county superintendents to find out what they do. Most of them, one facility only has somebody that they have come in, like twelve hours a week. The others, they're all county employees, which for us, again, it's not cost-effective for us to go that route. Horizons is the better financially. They've done a good job. I can say Tanya, who does the programming for us, is wonderful, she's flexible. She's maneuvered the program, so it's now even offered on the jail side, which is, it's been great to have those classes offered before, especially where the sentencing has been really low for the number. But she's busy being one person.
Sure. I mean, I think that makes sense if it's the least expensive way to go. I think we should do that. Does that motion?
Make a point.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you can carries. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Deborah, do we have other business?
I have one more bid to award, right, for computer services. We put this out to bid I think late summer and received seven responses. Tim Perry, the IT coordinator, has gone through all of them. He has written you a recommendation. I concur with his recommendation, which is to stay with Mainstay. For, and I would, I would recommend five years. They gave us a three-year contract or a five-year. The five-year saves some money. We've had very good success with Mainstay over the years. There's a, yeah, breakdown in your materials, you can see what their pricing is for each year of the five years or three years, if you wish to go that way.
Sure, we've been having Mainstay.
Very happy, they're, they're actually, because of the relationship that we have, we've been able to leverage all the services that they have. And now that like the sheriff's office is a hub for all the local departments countywide, they're, they're, they know exactly what they're doing and how they're doing it. So we don't have to redevelop the wheel. So I, I too would agree with the county administrator on awarding them.
So if we change it, it would slow things down for you?
We have had other vendors come in and try to do parts of it that have seriously slowed us down. It even actually brought us back a little bit to where we've had to do some crashes.
Okay. Sheriff, just one more question. Money aside, does it make sense to extend the terms from three to five years?
I think continuity in service is key, and I think that they have proven themselves to be a reputable and reliable company that has, again, built a very good relationship with us. So as long as the continuity in service continues, I, I may think that five years is a good, good plan.
What say the commissioners on that?
You agree.
I do agree, thank you for asking.
I'll move to accept the recommendation to contract with Mainstay for five years.
Five years. I'll say that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Let's go. Okay, right now. We have other business.
I think you do, I have no other business for you.
Wish you.
I don't know.
Seeing none, then we will move on to, is there any public comment this evening?
Good evening, my name is Tanawa Downing, and I'm a civil rights advocate and litigator out of Washington DC.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
Could you just state your name again?
My name is Tanawa Downing, and I'll be providing contact information right here, so you guys will have it yet. So I need to provide a notice to you guys. So I, I need to provide a notice to you guys tonight, this is in accordance with USCS Rules of Civil Procedure as well as also Rule seventeen, Rule, Rule twenty of the United States Supreme Court. So the Constitution of the United States of America is the overarching requirements that every state must follow. I trust that we all understand that. States cannot enact their own alternative legislation, substitute that for the guarantees of the Constitution, and then go out and enforce that, so that's constitutional. That would obviously be quite unconstitutional. So Clause one of Amendment five to the United States Constitution says, no person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or indictment of grand jury. So that's clear, you must have an indictment by a grand jury before arresting someone holding him over for a capital or an infamous crime. However, the state of New Hampshire here is enacted its own alternative legislation that permits prosecuting attorneys and law enforcement to charge by way of information and not by indictment. That is unconstitutional. Now, an immolument violation is when you pay someone to violate the Constitution. You can't do that. There's actually two areas of the Constitution that reinforces this. The first is Article one, Section ten, where it says that no state shall create any law which shall impair the obligation of contracts. So police officers, prosecutors, judges, they're all under contract. That's a contract to perform based upon the oath or affirmation that they took to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. So when the state of New Hampshire creates a law that directs them to disobey the Constitution, that would obviously be a violation of Article one, Section ten. Now, the second place that reinforces this is the Fourteenth Amendment. And that's where it says that no state shall create or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges and immunities of United States citizens. The privileges and immunities of United States citizens are at a minimum those that are enumerated within the Bill of Rights, the First Amendment. They cannot be impaired, and thus the state of New Hampshire here has created a law that is being enforced by agents whom you all pay to violate the Constitution of the United States. And as a result, there is an inordinate amount of people that are currently imprisoned here in the state of New Hampshire illegally and constitutionally. So I'm prepared to litigate this to the United States Supreme Court on behalf of one seven hundred thousand people that are currently imprisoned across America illegally and constitutionally. We're here today to let you know that if we continue to pay these public officials to violate the Constitution, the criminal sanctions can come from that. That is not the direction that I want to go, I'm trying to avoid that. I want to provide notice to all of you that you can understand the situation, so we can work together to resolve it. Because no state can create or enforce a law that is in violation of the Constitution of the United States of America, unfortunately, that's exactly what's happening. Now, I know that you guys are going to go to the attorney, and I'm, unfortunately, he's not here. I was actually enjoying the leading that he had when he was talking about juries and, you know, but um, I know you're going to go to the attorney, you're going to ask the attorney as soon as we're done whether or not what I'm saying here is true. And that attorney is going to point you to a case from nineteen eighty four from the United States Supreme Court called Hurtado versus California. And before you choose to rely upon that as the foundation, I must remind you that the Constitution of the United States of America is the foundation, not a judge made ruling. The Supreme Court of the United States has no constituted authority to be able to alter, amend, or destroy any of the provisions or guarantees of the Constitution, because that must be done by an authentic and explicit act of the people in accordance with the special meaning procedure of Article five. Furthermore, judges cannot legislate, we know that, because Clause one, Article one says all legislative power is vested in Congress of the United States. So, you know, please don't rely upon the foolish misunderstanding that a judge made ruling is superior to the Constitution of the United States of America. That would be clearly unconstitutional. Now, the other thing is, is that, and, and I, I kind of am going to leave you with this, but I hope that you guys will ask me some questions because there's a lot of information that I think that I could give to you that you would feel benefit from, but, but I want to entice you guys in the right direction, right? So, the United States Circuit Court has identified a two-part test to determine abuse of discretion. Okay, abuse of discretion. The second part of that test says that any erroneous view of the law is an automatic abuse of discretion. Any erroneous view of the law is an automatic abuse of discretion. Now, erroneous view of the law would mean that in your legal contemplation, that the lowest form of law, judgment ruling, is superior to the highest form of law of the Constitution of the United States, that would be an obvious erroneous view of the law. Therefore, if you continue to pay the public officials to commit these crimes, that, that would be an automatic abuse of discretion in accordance with the United States Circuit Court. Now, I know that you guys are wondering how this applies. Remember, you guys pay for the sheriff's department to do their work, right? You guys pay for the county jail to do what it does, you guys pay for the, for the county courtroom to do its work. If that courtroom is facilitating the abridgement of a constitutional obligation, you guys are paying for that to happen. If the sheriff's department is going out and executing a warrant, and I'm not saying that they know what they're doing this, but if they're executing a warrant that is based upon a judge that orders someone to be held over based upon information and not an indictment, that sheriff is now committing a crime, it's called deprivation of rights under court law. We don't want your sheriff's department to get in trouble. But when you also arrest someone and you hold them over in a county jail for that infamous or capital crime, that holding is where the crime is actually committed. So you guys are the ones who are actually abridging the constitutional obligation through the funding that you guys are doing because the Constitution says no person shall be held to answer for a capital or life sentence crime. The moment that a judge orders someone to be held over without having the proper charges issued in place, a crime has been committed. It's called a deprivation of rights under court law, it is Title eighteen USC subsection two four two. So I have approximately seven thousand affidavits on behalf of victims right here within the state of New Hampshire that have been charged by way of information, not by indictment, in violation of the Constitution of the United States. I don't want to have to convert these into criminal complaints, but we do need to get resolution on this, so I'm here today to, uh, to put this notice on the record, letting you know that we would like to work together to resolve this. And I do want to say that as of this moment, the way that the, the criminal conspiracy works with regard to public officials, all of you, is that any person who, having knowledge of any of the wrongs conspired to be done and who have the power to prevent or aided in the prevention of commission of the same neglects or refuses to do so, may be held as defendants in the action. So you guys have a lawful obligation right now to report these crimes. And actually, there's two things that you have to do. Once made aware of a criminal act, such as this undermining laws of the United States, two things that you need to do. First, you need to report the crimes, the proper reporting authority is the FBI. So you guys do need to report the crime. The second thing you must do to mitigate your culpability is you must notify your co-conspirators of your intent to no longer participate once made aware. And the easiest and quickest way to do that is say to your public officials whom you pay to do their work, please do not abridge your constitutional obligations anymore. You cannot rely upon an inferior state statute that directs you or to violate the Constitution of the United States of America. So thank you guys so much. I would welcome questions, but I do need to put this notice on the record.
Thank you, your remarks, we duly noted.
Thank you so much.
Do we have additional public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am.
We have one more.
Thanks so much.
My name is Jessica Saxton, I'm also a civil rights advocate and litigator from Washington DC. Very similarly to what Mr. Downing was just talking about regarding the unlawful arrest without the indictment of grand jury. You guys have issues within your, your court system regarding the unlawful removal of children. And unfortunately, the judges and law enforcement officers, trying to, if you see, if S is involved, you, the law enforcement officers are going out and and assisting to, to unlawfully remove these children from loving, healthy, fit parents directly from home. That's an abridgment of the Fourth Amendment and the right for every citizen to be secured into a person, uh, things in property. Um, I have two judges here that are listed on an affidavit of criminal conspiracy. Now, both of these judges unfortunately have been retired for a few years, but nonetheless, that does not make them that does not resolve their issue of how they unlawfully removed a child from this victim in this county. And I bring this to your attention, just like Mr. Downing, I bring this to your attention because if you are paying these judges or you are paying the courts, you know, to, to stay open and facilitate and allow these judges to to rule maliciously, oftentimes it's maliciously against these families, to separate and destroy the families. That's an unconstitutional act. What makes it worse is Title four. You have Title four funding that's coming into this county, that's a federal funding that allows for the counties to be paid after the child is removed and put into some type of state custody, foster care. You may not even know this, this is happening. Many of the county commissioners that we go and present this to, they have no idea. Some of them do. So I encourage you to go and look into it, look into Title four funding. What you'll find is that under Title four D, anytime that child support's issued, and then as we all know, most of the time, the men are issued child support. And sometimes it's, it's at such a high level, they can't even support themselves. But the state receives funding from a judge issuing child support. And so that incentivizes the judge to make sure that while at the state, the county's going to get a sixty-six percent kickback under Title four D funding, then why wouldn't we max out that child? If the state's going to receive funding under Title four E, where the state is, is going to receive funding for the duration of a child to be put into foster care, let's say they put in an eight, that's a ten-year kickback, I mean, the federal government, this county is going to be receiving because a child was removed unlawfully from a family and put into foster care. And in the event that child has a medical disability, the state continues to withdraw on that, uh, withdraw from that money, that federal funding, if the child is adopted out. So we have conflicts of interest at every, every angle here, and these are things that I encourage you to please go and research, educate yourself on. Because our families are not here to be destroyed, especially when there's profit involved. That goes back to the immolument violation, paying public officials to commit crimes against families. So take what I have said, please look at what Mr. Downing has said. I am serving you guys tonight with affidavits of criminal conspiracy. And under misprisonment felony, that's, that's Title eighteen subsection four. If you look up that federal code, it mandates you to report the crimes to the appropriate authority, which when a state judge is acting unlawfully, the only appropriate authority to investigate these crimes would be the FBI. So you, you must report these crimes to the FBI. It's as simple as, as sending this information to the local field office from the FBI. And then you, you're, you're absolved that one. You've done what you had to do according to the law, that law, eighteen USC four, if you look it up, it starts out with whoever. So whoever includes you, it includes me, includes anybody that's not the mayor.
Thank you for your remarks.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comments? Mr. Patrick Wood, how are you, sir?
Patrick, how are you? Commissioners, Patrick Wood, it's Laconia. Uh, I want to a little lighter than what we just heard. Um, I want to thank Commissioners Spanos for being part of the forum that we had a couple of weeks ago in Laconia on the homelessness issue. We will have a follow-up meeting soon, perhaps next week, I'm not sure what your schedule is, but we'll check on that. It was an interesting meeting. Commissioners would agree that there were some positives and there were some negatives came out of it, but it was interesting. And it definitely gave the public an opportunity to express their opinions. The Human Relations Committee for the City of Laconia is right now in a state of flux. Uh, it's, uh, the commission, the committee right now is appointed by the mayor. And obviously, a new mayor comes in, decides he doesn't want to have the committee anymore, it disappears. So a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, one of the city councilors asked some questions and the city council is now exploring the possibility of making the Human Relations Committee a full committee of the city. Uh, there's a process that they go through, there's a public hearing next Monday on that. Um, is it cementing the ordinances for the City of Laconia? Uh, it, it will be interesting to see how that goes, I think there is sufficient support on, on the city council to move that forward in a positive way. But we don't know. For that reason, my request, um, or my hope that we will be able to put on a program on Know Your Government obviously is on hold at this point until we know what's going to happen with the Human Relations Committee. Still want to do that, so if the committee continues in, in effect, and I'm fortunate enough to be on the committee uh, from January, we'll get together. Unfortunately, Deb, you're going to be enjoying somewhere warmer, I hope, in January. But we'll continue to keep you apprised of that as, as we continue. But I want to thank you all for, for your support and, you know, wish you the best going forward, I know things have been challenging this year especially. Um, and I think there, you know, we're going to do the best, all of us, to get through this time. As long as we're working together and support each other one way or the other, we can do that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Patrick, as you can see. Is there any further public comment this evening? Seeing none, then you move on. Thank you all.